Anthony, please leave this. Please leave this. To the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of silence for the 911 victim. Thank you.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tate.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Zupan.
Here.
I'll accept the motion to go into executive session.
So.
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain the motion to reconvene. It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tate.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Yes.
I don't know the four approval minutes. I'll entertain the motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of January 23, 2018.
Mayor, I move with three corrections. The first correction would be at the bottom of page one. When we reconvene from executive session, I believe we reconvened at 7:14, not at 7:46. The second correction would be on page six. In relation to new business. Item A, accounts payable, the roll call for the vote. For the eyes, trustee Jones should be replaced with trustee Grant. The third amendment for trustee Zupan, it says trustee Zupan stated that she was unknowing of who or what was going on. Please add to the end of that statement relative to new business coming into the village. So I would make a motion to approve the minutes with those three corrections.
Have a second. It was moved by trustee Zupan and seconded by trustee Tate that the minutes be accepted with the necessary corrections ever read. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the general proceedings of the minutes for the regular board meeting of February 13, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes with two amendments. The first one on page two. Under the clerk's report, the, one, two, three, four, fifth, no, second from last bullet point. The last sentence under the bullet point saying the electronic emails have been used quite a bit. That last sentence says electronic emails are also linked to the official Facebook page. There's a semicolon and the words "and she." I would ask that the words "and she" be removed from that line. The other change is on page three. I would ask that we add the community development report to that page. That particular evening, Ms. Jazinski reported on night court from February 7th with 130 tickets being issued, 17 guilty's. Okay, I'll give the clerk the information to add to the minutes to be approved with the approval of said minutes. So I would make a motion that these be approved with those two corrections.
Yes. What page?
Right.
We can't hear back here.
I'm, may I ask?
Go ahead.
Mr. Harvey, during public participation, at the conclusion of his comments, he welcomed you back. You had been gone for a while, so he was happy to see you.
Any other? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Todd, that the minutes read be accepted with the necessary correction. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the special board meeting of February 20th, 2018.
So.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Last item. I'll accept the motion for the approval of the committee meetings minutes for February 20th, 2018.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the special board meeting of February 20th, 2018.
So.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Motion is carried. We'll do that during the mayor's report and right now, we're gonna go into public comment. All question, all question, the mic's up down there. All question comments will be directed to the mayor. Speaker may comment on the matter of any matter pertaining to the business of Salt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may engage in debate, counter rebuttals, or replies. Counter replies. Please state your name.
Kathy Betcher. Twofold here. I had to call the police department for a pit bull running. And the, I was called back and told that they could not respond because there was shorthanded. So I was listening to the scanner and I was kind of upset that they weren't coming to get this dog. But then I found out that there were, they had responded to a shots fired. The thing is, we get mad at the police department and we're constantly putting them down and we know we do not have enough police, that's true, but when they get there and they get no cooperation and, and nobody wants to give them information and help them find out who the thugs are that are out there shooting and killing, we have no right to get mad at the police department for not being able to respond for a minor thing like a dog, which at that point was a minor thing. It could've turned into something more, but it wasn't. So shame on me for getting mad at them, but shame on everybody else over at that scene that would not give them cooperation that they need. We need to stick behind our police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Couch. And again, we do thank our police officers for what they do because they've had a rough week and they are unpaid as far as I'm concerned, overworked, and need help. Period. Lots of help. My problem is, I came up to Village Hall today because I have an issue with a property that I had sold. This was sold in March. I came to meet with Mr. Wizwadi because, well, let's go back further. I have, but due to the fact that Chase Bank screwed around with the seller, the buyer, that we were not able to close on that property until August 31st. All the certs are right here, have copies. I showed them to Mr. Wizwadi today, but he refused to accept them. The form reads for the reoccupancy, can you say it? Re-occupancy. It shows that it is a buyer, not a renter, that's buying that property. And all these certifications with the copy of the certification for occupancy. So Mr. Wizwadi's not accepting then. So I asked to speak to our mayor. He was called and she said he's in a meeting, this was at 5:00 after 4:00, but if you'd mind waiting, I'll come out and speak with you. I waited for 55 minutes when Mr. Wizwadi came back and said, no, this isn't gonna be whatever. And because he's claiming that this is a renter living in the house that the guy bought, he's not going to accept these certifications and wants me to have all these recertifications done. That to me is unacceptable. It was done once, paid for once, all these people that have been certified, here's the copies, back in March, and now he feels fit not to accept them. Mr. Mayor, I feel that's unacceptable and if you're going to allow him to do that to me as an old resident here, I feel sorry for anybody coming in here buying property and what they're gonna be facing. And also, I would like to ask, did you find out about the fire hydrants? How many fire hydrants are we down? Also, I was able to attend the safety meeting with Ms. Zupan last week. One minute. And I appreciate what she's working on and I appreciate the fact that the chief is working on these dogs that we need to get licensed and get them off the street. However, these owners need to be held accountable, however, we need to do it. That's all.
In regards to your add question about, was that a meeting? I was in a meeting up until 5:30. So I don't know who gave you that information that if you'd be willing to wait, I'm not sure, but I will personally look into what it is you're talking about and if it's viable information that you stated, then yes, we will take care of that.
Okay, I waited until after 5:00 and you didn't.
I didn't, the meeting, as I stated ma'am, we're not gonna go back and forth, but I stated that the meeting without add wasn't over till 5:30.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, I will look at what paperwork that you had. If it's in compliance with what we're talking about, fine. If it's not ma'am, then I'm not, I don't know what you want me to do. So I will look at the work or paperwork that you, that you said you submitted. I will look it up and find out if it's been done in a properly, in a timely manner and if it's after a certain time, it's not our fault if it's not filed, it has to be refiled. So I have to look at all the facts ma'am. I can't sit here and judge and tell you what it is without knowing all the facts.
Linda Washington, first of all, I want to say to the trustees, no one should be going in your mailbox, taking your mail out. If a resident comes up here and wanna share something with the trustees and they ask the clerks up front to put it in your mailbox, it should be placed in your mailbox. I came up here and I asked them for something to be put in you guys' mailboxes and none of you all received it. I was told that someone went in your mailboxes and took the mail that I came up here and brought for you out. That is very serious. You are an elected official and you were elected by the residents to take care of the residents' concerns and issues that they have. So you need to talk to whoever you need to talk to and let them know, it is not acceptable to remove anything out of your mailbox that was put in there, that was put in there without your permission. Also, second of all, I am here to talk about the ordinance again with cyberbullying and being on social media by your staff. Mayor Burgess, I've been here several times to talk about it. Today, I had some information that was given to me that I printed out. Joe Wizwazi is still writing on Facebook along with others. I gave you all documentation, five pages of stuff that's on that Linda Renee Murphy page. I have stacks and stacks of it. I passed it out in Salt Village, out of Salt Village. I emailed it to people to their desk to show just how stupid and ignorant people that work around you are. And I want to say to you, Mayor Burgess, in all fairness, you made a statement last week that you can't stop people from doing stuff and I've talked to you before, one-on-one, about the Facebook attacks and you have told me personally that you can't stop, but you have asked people around you to stop and they will not stop. So I will give you credit for saying that you have mentioned it to them, but I want to let you and the board know that whatever has to be done next will happen, it will go to that level. And I also want to just make all of us cognizant of one thing, of the times that we're living in, people just riding on the expressway in Chicago, just minding their own business, their cars get shot, people get threatened, people get killed, these kind of things that people write. It doesn't bother me what they write about me because I'm thick-skinned and you're not gonna stop nothing that I want to do. So writing all this about me and making up stuff about my book, I'm still somebody's mother, I'm still somebody's grandmother, I still preach, I'm still a motivational speaker and you all trying to destroy my character, none of it is gonna work because I'm gonna keep on doing everything that I'm doing. But there are people whose lives you have literally destroyed, politically and personally. And I will keep coming back here and spreading the light on all this stuff that your staff and your family members are allegedly writing on Facebook and that won't happen, we're about to get it out because I print it all out and I pass it out everywhere all over this village, from the pastors to the businesses, to show them what kind of people we have in leadership and that we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to, that's sitting up here playing on Facebook all day with your nasty self.
Excuse me, um, excuse me, before you go any further. I have no problem with people coming up to the front, expressing their concern, that's what it's for. It's for you to express whatever it is that you feel that's on your mind and it says village business. But the problem I do have is name-calling and threatening gestures. That is so wrong to call a person out of there. I'm not saying this for rebuttal, please, sit down. I'm not saying this for rebuttal. You had your time to say what you had to say. I'm going to have my time to say what I had to say about what you commented. But to come up here each and every week and call people names out in public, to make those type of comments, to bring people's family in there, out here at this podium each and every week, it's just ridiculous. Can I stop it? I cannot, just like I can't stop you from saying what you just said. It's just a part, but I will ask you to leave if you keep going back and forth.
You can ask me to leave?
I will do that. But to keep going back and forth and doing this, I mean, it's a personal thing, fine, that's what it is. Everyone here that's, that's, that's an elected official knows that when you enter this arena, that could have, people that work for the village should not have to deal with those type of, but it happens. That's called, you know, that's, that's part of the job, they know they're going. I respected you, uh, Ms. Washington. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure you respect me.
I can leave.
Then leave, then please leave. Thank you so much. Thank you. But to do this each and every week to the fame and talk about and, and, and talk down on someone is not, is not, I have, I don't have, I don't control. Ma'am, please go, please go, thank you. But to continue to do this each and every week does not make sense. And I'm hoping that we are grown people here, that we would be tired of respect one another because I'm gonna respect you, I'm not gonna say, I'm not, I'm gonna respect you. So I'm just saying that to people that come up and say whatever they have to say. So, yes ma'am.
Judy Cast here. And to add to what Linda said, you said you can't control what somebody says on social media. I disagree with you. There is an ordinance about any of you putting anything on social media to the extent that it was put on there and you have the right to fire that person for doing that. So you do have control over that. Now, to get down to my things, a while back, the subject of operational funds was brought up. We questioned it. It might be known out in the work field, but it is not known with municipalities. It was going to be checked by our attorneys as of today. You haven't told us anything about what the attorneys had to say about that and it's been quite some time. Also, Casparic was doing an audit and they needed more material in order to complete the audit. A lot of material. You put the audit on hold until that material was gathered. Well, as of now, that audit still isn't complete. When is it going to be complete? Now to go into why I'm really here. And this is for the board, mainly two members of the board, but all in general. Supposedly, we have a couple of professional and well-educated people. Well, I think they slept through some of the classes. When you have a finance director that has been fired and he's been accused of absconding with money, why wouldn't you ask for an audit? Even if he wasn't accused, an audit should have been put in place immediately to cover our backs and it wasn't done. Where did you go to school? It's very upsetting to the public to watch educated people turn their heads and turn their backs on what they were taught. And when you sit up there and you don't question, why were people hired without your approval? They're gonna get a salary and not, oh no, not just a salary, but a top salary. But you guys didn't vote on it. But that's okay with you. You know it all. But why is it being done? Why aren't you fighting to get it stopped? The second thing I want to go into is our police department and that, what did you say? Oh, that's all right, I can stay until next week.
In regards to the audit that's still on hold, because we're waiting on the audit coming from the police and fire pension board and a few things that we have to take care of. So as far as the final audit findings will be available by the end of this month. Yes ma'am?
Yes, my name is Terry Johns. I live on Carroll Avenue where they, where they had the shootings and everything.
I'm sorry, what's she's name?
Terry who?
Terry Johns.
Johns?
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
You know me, okay. I was wondering if we can have the lights turned on? It's all dark.
What street is this on?
On Carroll, on Jeffrey, on Peterson. There's so many lights that are out, they've been out for the longest and I was just wondering, you know, can we get them turned on? I called Edison, but they said, you know, the village, it's up to the village, you know, the ones with the steel, they only, here are the wooden ones, I guess. Trying to sell my house and they broke in, stole my furnace and all this stuff. And I had all the, um, had it checked out, you know, all the furnace before and the roof and everything, I had all the certifications done and I don't know what's gonna happen now. Anyway, I was just wondering if they could at least get the lights turned on there, brighten it up around there. I know the shootings are happening in the daytime now, but it's still dark, you know, they like the darkness too. All right, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Johns, I just wanted to say, I did talk to the public works director yesterday in regards to not just your areas, other areas where the lights, what happens is, they come on and these are new lights, these are LND lights, and if the lights don't show the proper wattage as it comes on, it'll go back off and it'll reset itself three times. After that, it'll stay off the rest of the night. So, and that's the nature of that beast. But what I had asked is that we, until we can get that done, in order to get that done, we have to call a comment out and they have to shut down a grid so it can get repaired or replaced, whatever it has to take care of. But we're looking at trying to keep the lights on 24/7 until that is done.
And then all the graffiti down on 217?
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's something that's, that's, that's not just where you're at, there's a lot of other graffiti and that's something that we are trying to look into.
Just looks so bad, you know, you're trying to sell your house, they see all this.
I'm sad that you're trying to sell though ma'am, but I understand, but no, graffiti is the problem, yes it is.
Tyler Pointer. I live on Carroll and all this shooting been going on, on that street. I got grandkids, be outside. I was in the house Sunday when all the other shootings started. Last year, my, my truck got window shot out, my baby car got shot. After that, I put cameras up, but they're not for the police use. What they need to do, put a camera on that pole where all this stuff happened at. Maybe it'll cut this, some of this stuff down. And the other thing I got, when the police patrol those streets, they see people sitting in these yards, people's steps, nobody living there, why do the police make their move? Why don't they make them get out of that, off that block? They don't live here. The people doing the shooting don't live in the village. They coming from Ford Heights, Chicago Heights, they end up on Carroll Avenue for some reason. Now, I let the police use my camera once for accidents that happened, but my house camera not made for the police use. But I got, bring it to you today, they need to put a camera on that pole, right in that center block where all this stuff is happening. center block where all this stuff is happening. Because God knows if anything happened to one of my kids, my grandkids, you know, it's bad, but all the other people, they need to move these people off these vacant houses. They drive by and see these people sitting there, nobody live in there. They need to make them move, get out of this, get off this block. This where all the shootings started at. I'm just talking about business. I'm not talking about no bull job. I'm talking about people's lives being taken. You can walk down the street and may get shot. Everybody can walk down the street and may get shot. But if the people doing it, they don't live in this village, and the police need to run them out of here when you see them, and people sitting in these vacant houses. That's what we need to stop. Now, I'm not putting nothing on the police, but they see stuff, and no punks out there talk to those police just like they talk to a child or something, and they do nothing to them. They gotta get a backbone.
Mr. Porter?
Yes?
Um, before you leave, I just wanted to tell you that, um, yesterday, I think, I forgot exactly what time it was, but I had a conversation with our chief for about an hour and a half in my office.
Okay.
And some of the things you were talking about is gonna be addressed. I'm not going to, I don't like to divulge how things happen because like other people try to put out there, we already got two officers on staff, and we called two here, there's no more than one. Do that, that doesn't make sense. I don't do that. But I will tell you this, man to man, those issues that you're talking about will be addressed. Those issues that you just got to talking about as far as the cameras, and also as far as police patrolling will be addressed. They were addressed when we talked. So it's not going on deaf ears, and you're right, that does make sense, and you're absolutely right about people coming into the town. Because that's what happens in most towns when shootings happen. It doesn't happen if people live here, people that came here, that someone lived here, brought them here. So you have to kind of look at, it's not you, but the ones that they come to the house and look at, why, why is this person here? So only thing I can tell you is, yes, it has been talked about, yes, we did, and it's going to be something taken care of. I don't know how much chief is gonna tell you tonight, because I don't want, I don't want, I don't like to, I like to show. I don't want to just tell you what I'm gonna do, I just do it.
The problem I got with these boys sitting around on these porches, they shouldn't be there. The police see them there, chase them away. They don't live there. They live in Chicago Heights or Ford Heights somewhere. They don't live out here.
Yeah.
If they, if they live on Peterson, get them on Peterson.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's unfortunate that we cannot stop shooting, but we could, we could put things in place and let them know that we're around.
Right. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
With trustee Zupan, Chief Kowalski, and their committee, and my concern was the same thing. I don't live on Carroll, but if I did, I would try to get the heck off of that street. I live about three blocks away, and I can't tell you how many times I sit in my living room, and we hear gunshots, and I look at my husband and I say, "Fireworks or gunshots?" And we play that game. I'm tired of that game. For the last several weekends, we've had shootings. I don't know how much it goes on. I'm at home often enough to know, but I'm hearing it's almost a daily occurrence. When I got home from church on Sunday, 20 minutes after I had just got, drove down the street, fireworks or gunshots, and all of a sudden, we hear cars running down my street. I have grandchildren. There are other children on my block. I'm glad to hear that it's being addressed, but I did raise this concern with the chief. It didn't just start. It's been going on for several weeks, and really for several years. So to say that we're just now looking into it, I suggest every trustee up there, get a scanner, and I suggest you take a few days and listen to it. Just listen to it from morning until night, and you'll hear the cries of people saying, "I need a police officer," and they're told, "Oh, we can't get to that call right now because our police officers are tied up somewhere else." Today, a call came through. There was a, a person who was getting their car towed, and they went to get a gun because they didn't want their car towed. And while officers were busy with that, some other lady called and said there was some kids getting ready to break in their house, and it's not the first time they did it. But the last time she called the police, nothing was done about it. She said, "That's okay, I'll take care of it myself." That's not the kind of thing I want to hear. Number one, was there school today? Because if there was school today, why were two young kids breaking in this lady's house? Number two, why does she feel like she needs to take care of it herself? Because our officers cannot be everywhere. I'm not complaining about the police department. I'm complaining about the fact that we're three or four police officers short. That's what I heard. And when I hear three or four police officers short, and then I hear that there's somebody that can't be taken care of because they're short, that concerns me. And it's right there in my neighborhood. What would you do if it was in yours? That's what I want to know. I want you to listen to that scanner. And second of all, you lightly coded over some bids tonight. I know I don't come to all the meetings, but whatever your opening bids were tonight, had it been discussed prior to this day, what you were accepting bids for?
Yes, it has.
Okay, and what was it? I couldn't hear.
For the, it's a riser for our expansion tank.
For your expansion tank?
Expansion tanks.
Okay, because I couldn't hear you back there. I'm sorry. So thank you for clearing that up for me. Thank you.
Maria Scovando, I'm here again to address the social media ordinance that you all were given, that you all either maybe, um, Mayor David Hanks was right, and you all don't know how to read, uh, because obviously you didn't read it. Joe Wizewode is still here. I'm gonna keep coming until you do something about it, or he's gone. Either way. Again, he was in my linked profile. I received Bogus email at my job. I have to keep going to HR. Now, my computer has to be searched to find out where that email came from. It's like stalking. So you all need to do something about it, which you should have done from the beginning when you were given the ordinance. And just remember that while you all sit up here, and you all want to have big heads thinking that you're better than everybody else, remember that the residents voted you in, and they can vote you out, and you all will need the residents before they need you. So you need to remember that. And again, I have my job with my credentials. I have a diploma, and I know it was said that you were trying to give me a job. I didn't need a job. Those people that you made up the jobs for needed the job. I didn't. And obviously, you didn't know my salary till I blurted it out. And it was probably because I didn't go around saying, "My money, my money, my money." Well, I didn't need the job, and I'm glad that I got out, because right, and the reason I quit, one of the reasons, was I had heard that there was something going on, and it would be pinned on me. And that's why I quit in a meeting so that the whole audience knew that I quit, so that you wouldn't say. And right after I quit, I heard there was $250,000 missing. Where is the money? I know people been asking about that, and we haven't heard an answer. That's all. When you're a failure, you lie. Remember, you lie, you lie, you lie.
For you to make that type of accusation, hopefully you can back it up. I'm sorry, my fault. I shouldn't have said anything. Who's next? Who, who's next? Next, next order of business, um... Are you, are you through, ma'am? Because just like the other one, just like the other one, I will ask you to leave soon. Thank you. I will ask you, we're not going back and forth. Mayor's report. Item number six. First of all, the building that, uh, what they're doing building right now on the northwest part of Salt Trail and, um, just west of 394 for the Lenny Gas and Wash. So they'll start to excavate that, as you can see, um, right there on that corner. Um, they're trying to get it on the roof before the asphalt, um, plants close, but we'll see what happens. But the building is, um, and the excavating is underway, and they started, um, yesterday. So you'll be seeing a lot of traffic back and forth to get that particular venture started. Uh, second, the corn dog roast is a success. I'd like to thank all that help making it a success. I'd like to thank the trustees that came out, the residents that came out, that volunteered, um, that made it a success, uh, the people that, um, got involved in, um, helping, um, cook the corn, help cook the, um, hot dogs and, and serve them. Uh, we had, um, Walgreens out here, they gave out, um, some souvenirs. TESCA, which is the one that's doing the comprehensive plan, they came out also, and, um, we're asking everyone, those that were there, their opinion on certain things, what they would like to see, um, all that's gonna be part of the comprehensive plan. So I'm sure, I hope we got a lot of things that were put on that board, because we get a lot of things that happened right here at the Village Hall. So I'm hoping that, uh, there were, um, some of your comments and concerns that you had. You came out to the corn dog roast, you could have wrote them down, but, um, you know, it's still gonna be ongoing. Also, I'd like to thank the fire, the police, I'm sorry, the fire department, and the person that made it happen, the helicopters, the helicopter that came, the first time I've ever seen one land peacefully in Salt Village. And they came out, and it was a medevac from University of Chicago. They landed in the field, they let the kids sit in it. They weren't given rights, um, kind of expensive to do that, and plus liability was kind of high for something like that. But we saw it land and take off, and I thought it was an awesome experience. And I'd like to thank the person that actually went out here and did it, and he's here today, Captain Dennis Sinnerwick. I'd like to thank you very much for making that happen. Also, the comprehensive plan, CMAP, will be here tomorrow. There's flyers at the back, but they'll be here tomorrow. Also asking for some more input, and it says, "Help shape the future of Salt Village." So they're gonna be here, as they were here before, um, asking questions so they can, um, form their opinions and get everything, um, underway and compiled to bring it back to the board, um, and to the village. Um, this, again, this is a grant that was, that was awarded to us to make this happen, something that we needed and haven't had since 1999. So, um, it's, it's something that will be, you can tell it was 1999 the last time, so hopefully it doesn't be that, not that long again, but it's something that needs to be updated and upgraded. Um, seven o'clock, seven o'clock right here, right here in Village Hall. And last but not least, I'd like to ask the board and the audience that's here today to, with me, and I would like to wish our clerk, Marva Campbell Freud, a happy birthday. And so now, I'm gonna open the, uh, bids for the, um... This is from Pittsburgh Tower in Tangs. Okay, the, um, see the check, see the amount? I see the, I see the amount that's there. The, the amount of the check should be $2,960, and that's what it says here, but I don't see a check. This is 10% of the bid itself, which is $29, but there's no check. So there, it says the amount of the bond, check or draft.
Right, right. It's probably a bond, so there won't be a check. There should be a document in there that explicitly the bid bond.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But it doesn't, but it says the amount of the bond, check or draft, okay. And which is the 5% of the amount of bid. Okay, so that's not, that's not correct then. Doesn't have the total amount of the project either. Wait a minute. Nope. Doesn't have the amount of the project, but it says 2,900 is the amount, 5% of the amount of the bid itself. And then, but now, it was... Well, if you can, because I don't see a check here, and, um...
Right here.
The check? Right, 5% here. Yeah, but this, okay. Okay, so then the total amount of the project is 6, $59,200. The next one is from McGuire Iron Inc. Now, they do have, they said their bid bond amount is 10% of the total. And their proposal, um, is for a total of $69,000, $80,000, and $15,000. So that's $80,000, um, $84,000, $80,000. So I'm gonna turn these over to our engineer.
I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
During our budget hearings, um, in the budget, uh, 20... During our budget hearings, um, in the budget, uh, 20...
Yes, trust me. Yes?
If I recall, in the budget meeting from, uh, 2018, 19, we put, uh, there was an estimated $40,000 to be put up for a wiser. And it wasn't gonna be in the budget during that time, it's clearly stated in, um, the package. Now, um, I want to know, where's that money gonna come from? And since these bids seem to be over $40,000, where are we gonna get the rest of the money? Uh, it wasn't in the budget, and it's clearly stated in there that you're not gonna put it in the budget. So, where's this money gonna come from?
Okay, well, I'm sure that it's part of operational costs. But right now, we're gonna have to find out, first of all, about these bids and make sure that we need, when Jim brings them back to the board, and then we'll have to, it's gonna be brought back to the board for discussion. And at that time, I'm sure we can discuss that part of the, what you're asking for. So, well, I didn't, I didn't know what the budget bids were gonna be. I didn't know how much it was gonna cost.
No, it was just, you know, it's saying it may get in the budget and it may not. So, we have an idea.
It might be in the budget. I haven't, I haven't had a chance to actually look and see, did it say riser?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if it's not, you said it said riser in the budget.
Yes.
Okay, then if it's in there, then...
No, it's not in the budget. It was listed as one of the things that had to be budgeted, and it wasn't, you know, for the budget.
Okay, well, I have to, we have to look at that, and then we'll bring it to, I'll bring it to the board to, if it's not in there, it has to be done, then the board has to make a decision whether or not they wanna get it done.
And it was only for 40, over $40,000.
But you said it wasn't in the budget, so it doesn't really matter how much it is. So, it is what it is, and if the board wants to move forward to get it done, then we'll have to figure out how we're gonna amend the budget to make it happen. So, you'll have to, I mean, if it's, if you said it's not in there, so it doesn't matter, didn't matter then how much it cost. Cause if you said it's not in there, then... It was asked to bring those projections back, because those, that particular thing has to be taken care of at some point, so... And then we'll have to be a long enough thing, brought back to the board to be amended. To amend, to amend the budget to, to accommodate it.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm, sort of concern is that we're, um, I guess, making a bill, and I know this is something we have to be done, because this has been talked about since February, and it seemed like that should've been already set up for the, uh, to be put in the budget. But since it's not, I hope you'll take a look at it, cause that's something that's mandatory, I think, we need for the, uh, infrastructure repair.
All right. You said that you have something ready for us next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll put this particular item on the agenda for committee next week. That's all that I have. Item B, Village Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna attempt to be sort of quick, even though I have quite a bit that I wanna mention. Um, as you guys know, we are a ticket agent for Pace, and we ordered initially 10 books of tickets for residents in January, because we were asked to do so. I was informed yesterday that we needed to order 10 additional books, because the sales are going quite briskly. Just as a reminder, as procedure, RTA will deliver the books, and then they will submit an invoice to us for the amount. Um, but the program seems promising as now individuals are coming in, purchasing multiple sets of tickets at a time. In terms of IML, the conference that's coming up very soon for the trustees, your conference packets and per diem checks will be available at the Committee of the Whole Meeting next week, September the 18th. Directions are located inside the packet. You will be signing off, stating receipt of the per diem received. Any funds not spent must be returned back to the treasurer, and it has to be in cash. Next, Saw Village will host a Bloom Township Democratic Organizations Monthly Meeting tomorrow in the Senior Center, tomorrow, September the 12th, at 7:00 PM. We're hoping that many of you will find a way to divide your time before, between rather, CMAT helping us with our vision and our plan, as well as finding out what's happening at the county level and at our township level. If you're interested in filing a property tax appeal, please come to the Office of Bloom Township. Um, there are staff there that's available to help you with your paperwork. You will need to bring your tax bill and a picture ID. The office is located 425 South Hosted in Chicago Heights. If you have questions, you can call 708-754-9400. Saw Village will also co-host a community outreach forum with Commissioner Larry Rogers of the Cook County Board of Review, and that's gonna take place here November the 16th. And you may ask, what's the difference? Because they're both dealing with tax appeals. Well, the one that's in Bloom Township is step one. And if you're not really pleased with what happens in terms of your appeals at the township level, then I would say, come to the Board of Review, which is the next step after you appeal your appeal. And so, they're coming here so that you can complete all of the documentation, and they'll bring it with them, and they'll help you. And I know for a fact that it's successful, because they definitely helped me last year. Um, the consolidated election will take place April 2nd, 2019. Petitions can be circulated beginning next Tuesday, September the 18th, and they will be filed with the Village Clerk. If you are a candidate for a trustee, if you are a candidate for the school board member, you will file yours at Cook County Clerk's office. And to be perfectly honest, I'm sorry, I don't know where the library board will file theirs. Uh, but the filing period for all candidates is December the 10th through the 17th, uh, beginning on Friday. I will have a packet for those who are running for trustee in terms of what to submit when you come to file your paperwork in December. And I will have those packets at the front desk, so just simply ask for it. And if there's ever any other questions that you have or need, please don't hesitate to give me a call. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Village Engineer, Mr. Jim Zarni.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, work continues on the 223rd Street Road Reconstruction Project. Concrete work is 90% complete. The contractor has completed some of the existing asphalt service removal, and public works continuing their water main repair work in the area. And then, secondly, we will evaluate the bids received today for the elevated tank riser replacement project. We will prepare a letter of recommendation for award of the project, and we would expect the board to consider that at the next board meeting. Thank you, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance, report to Department of Financing and Administration, and to Director Judy Suffen.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanna start off just saying that the board has forwarded for consideration a resolution for the village to remove the previous finance director from the village's banking relationships, and to add the interim finance direction to those bank relationships. Nothing else is changing. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate, um, Mike Bartnicki on his very well-deserved retirement. He has been extremely helpful during this transition, and I have very much enjoyed working with him. With his retirement, though, we now have two open positions in Village Hall that we are looking to fill. Um, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Fire Department?
I got a question. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've asked several times for financial documents, reports.
Use the microphone.
I've asked several times every week for financial reports that we should be getting in order to do our job with trustees, and we should have some kind of financial information available to us so we can make informed decisions. So, I understand Ms. Suffen has just started the job, but there are some issues, some reports that she had before then that we should be able to get now and on a continuous basis. So, I was hoping that we could get those, uh, reports regularly, every month, like we normally do. Uh, I'm talking about aging, you know, some stuff like that. I gave you 10, all right?
I, yeah, I have that on my desk. I sent you an email yesterday that I have the aging report on my desk, the comparison to budget, the water and the sewer report. Um, did you not get my email?
May, what's, what's the email? You gotta send it to me. What is it on your desk?
Well, I just wanted to, an operation, an opportunity to explain it to you and make sure that you understood what I was gonna turn over.
Okay.
Cause that's new to me. I mean, I have not turned over those reports to you before.
Yeah, just send them to me, and then if I have any questions, then I'll answer them. I appreciate that. Uh, the second thing I want to ask about is that, uh, it's been brought up several times. We still haven't got the legal guidance on operational transfers. I know you said we did it, but I, you know, everybody got it, but I haven't seen one for operational transfer and how we stand on that. We haven't got any information on Casper, uh, audit either. And you know, you said it's gonna be in September, so we looking forward to that as well. Also, um, for your, uh, for the finance, I don't know if she, she called him finance director, but the director, it doesn't have finance in her title. However, I would like to know, what is her title? What is her job description? What is her salary? When is she gonna be appointed? And when is she gonna be approved? Those are the things that we need to know. I understand that Ms. Suffen is doing the work, but we need to know what's going on with our finances. So, we need to know who's responsible for what, what is her role and responsibility, not only Ms. Suffen, but also the mayor and the trustees, because certain things we can't do without some reports. So, we need to know what's going on and how long it's gonna take to get things started. So, um, those are my questions for, maybe, uh, Mayor could answer those. But we really need those reports.
Well, I have the reports that you asked for.
Okay. So, if we can get the rest of that information, I will appreciate it.
Are you sure?
I thought she was gonna answer my question.
No.
Oh, well.
Because she has the answers for you. She told you to whatever it is that you needed, she has it on her desk.
She asked it.
She needs to, she said she needs to. Go over it with you. Sending you an email and going back and forth is counterproductive. If you, if you have the questions, if you have a question right there, there it is right there. You can ask that question right there in her office. Instead of, if you get, if you get an email and then you have a question, now we're going back and forth.
Well, to reiterate, I appreciate the reports when you give them to me. But my second part of the question is to find out, what about the job description, the salary, things like that, nurture it.
If she is interim, she is interim director. Interim.
I understand what you're saying.
She hasn't been, she hasn't been voted on yet.
I understand that.
Okay, so then that's what I'm asking you.
I asked the question is asking, when is this gonna happen? That's the question.
At this particular point right now, I don't know.
Okay, well, it's all yes.
I said it last week.
Okay, well, you can say it again.
I guess.
We don't wanna be unprofessional here.
You're doing that.
I know.
Fire Department Chief, Fire Department, the Captain Dennis Sinnerwick, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, over the period from August 24th through September 6th, Fire Department responded to 13 calls. We had four fire alarms, three vehicle accidents, two ambulance assists, and four auto aids to our neighboring communities. On the way are the trustees, two of our firefighters attended classes. Firefighter Willie Williams recently passed his state DMT certification. Engineer Kevin Luther received his fire service instructor certification. All this schooling was paid for by the theme grant that we received, so those funds are going through good use at no cost to the village. Uh, you've already spoken about the corn and dog rolls, so that was a success. And our last comment is, as first responders, we will never forget the tragedy that occurred 17 years ago today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And also, I just wanted to say thank you also for the trailer, the informational trailer that we, uh, we, that we got. Um, and it seemed like it was a facelift done on it, so just wanted to say kudos to whoever had that done, because it came in one color, and now it's a different color, so... And that's a good thing. I just wanna say thank you very much. Assistant Chief Myers, okay, he's not here to say thank you, but I will tell him. I'll see him tomorrow, I think. Police Department Chief Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trustees, for the past two weeks, we have 488 calls for service with 18 arrests. A case of interest is reported, as I reported, on August 28th at the board meeting. A victim was shot on Sunday, uh, August 19th in the 1600 block of 217th Street. The victim was shot several times and was very uncooperative. Our investigators were very persistent and able to identify an offender. Evidence was presented to the state's attorney's office, and the investigators were able to secure an attempted murder arrest warrant for the offender. That offender was then apprehended on September 8th and was now taken into custody. Uh, that individual is one of our issues with a lot of our gunshots. And now that the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force has been able to present their investigation to the Cook County State's Attorney's Office, and charges on two subjects have been approved, I'd like to report that the Saw Village Police Department responded to shots fired on 21800 Block and Carroll on September 9th. Officers found the victim driver who was in a vehicle had been shot. Two others were also in the vehicle, fled the scene, but later apprehended and taken into custody. The South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force was called out to assist with this investigation. Uh, through the persistence of our police officers, detective and assistants of the task force, the information that they gathered was presented to the state's attorney's office today. And again, charges were approved on both subjects, who are now in custody and at Cook County Jail. It should be noted, as was mentioned earlier, that, uh, the victim along with the two other subjects who were apprehended were not from Saw Village. Uh, no further information at this time, since it's still an active investigation. We're looking for other people who are involved, and I truly appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. Our next DEA prescription drug drop-off date is Saturday, October 27th. Containers will be in the Police Department lobby between 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM for your drop-off. Again, we'll be hosting Coffee with the Cop, and I had the pleasure to talk to Mr. Farmer today. We're going to hold the Coffee with the Cop at the Senior Center between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM on October 3rd, which is a Wednesday.
Wait, wait, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
At 8:00 AM to, that would be a long time to drink coffee. 8:00 AM to, hold on, let me correct this. Auto-correct wasn't, 8 to 10:00 AM. If you guys won't come out at 10:00, we could be here too. There'd be police officers, there aren't police officers working at 10:00 o'clock.
Won't be me, though.
24/7. Um, also, lastly, Rail Safety Week, September 23rd to 29th is the fifth annual, annual Rail Safety Week. Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, along with the support from state, county, and local law enforcement agencies, along with partnerships from Metro, CN, and United Pacific Railroads, are proud to be part of this national promotion of safety around railroad tracks and trains. For more information about Illinois Rail Safety Week, please bill, visit, uh, www.illinoreilssafetyweek.org. Uh, lastly, um, everyone talks about stray dogs. Uh, Marva posted a great picture on the Saw Village E-News of somebody who turned in a stray pit bull. Friendliest dog that you could ever meet. Sergeant Majdek, we took the dog to county line. So, if you're looking for a friendly pit bull, young male, he's at county line. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Emergency Management Agency Director Alan Babri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. In conjunction with the Fire Department report, I'm not gonna go into all the calls that we went on to with them. Um, just, just, uh, a note that Thursday, we are having a SMART meeting with our other SMART agencies on the 13th, which is Thursday, up in Markham, Illinois, and we are still actively... on the 13th, which is Thursday up in Markham, Illinois, and we are still actively looking for new members to join our department. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll read the, no, you know what? Public Safety, did you want to read that? Beth? Did you want to read Kevin's report?
Certainly.
Okay.
Unfortunately, Director Weller couldn't be here tonight, but I will read his public works report for him. First off, with leaking B-boxes at 21724 Peterson, 1950 219th Place, 1731 223rd Place, and one EME dig request for an inside leak at 21655 Clyde, they're shifting back as soon as possible though, because those are still outstanding. They've had staff working on several emergencies located around the 223rd Street Road Project. The last three items are two storm sewer repairs where they're waiting for parts, and the last valve on Cornell. ComEd has come out with a truck to support the power pole so that they can do their work. They have a small job, their small jobs are being completed here at Village Hall, the Police Department and the Fire Department, like the plumbing and the lights, the HVAC and leaks, just to name a few, a few items. The HVAC at Village Hall here is back to full working condition, apparently. Grass cutting continues throughout the village locations. The part-timers are trying to keep up. The rain obviously has caused grass to run amok, so they are a bit behind. September's regular pickup with the branches had to be put out by September 9th for final pickup, and once they have done that task, they won't be back. The piles that are put out after that will be given tickets, so please, if you have piles out after that, please pull them back out, pull them back and get them off of your parkways. Just as a reminder, they're coming into the rain season soon, so please don't put your debris into the roadways, because obviously that will cover up the storm sewers and cause flooding back up and damage, and it's a waste of taxpayers' monies due to the overtime that is incurred by their staff. And the staff, speaking of staff, they're doing their best to assist all the departments, set up for address all the residents' complaints as much as possible, so please be patient with them as they are behind across the board. And then they are also prepping several concrete jobs and quoted on moving forward. And that concludes what he had prepared.
I just wanted to make an observation. There was a water main break on around 220 Second and Yates today. I was out earlier. I'm sure that they got it under control. I don't know if the water's back on, and I don't know if there was a boil order distributed down that block. If it was, then I'd suggest that you do that, but there was a pretty sized water main break coming out of the driveway of a particular home on 220 Second and Yates. So that was earlier today. Haven't had a chance to go back, but I'm pretty sure that it's been, you know, at least addressed and the water should be back on.
I have a question, well, request. Can we, can the report for the fire hydrants and the water main breaks be included in Kevin's report every month or so? So we don't know, since that seems to be a hot bottom, bottom, button act request.
Wait a minute, you said fire hydrant. What do you mean by?
Fire, how many inoffical?
Oh, inoffical.
Fire hydrants and water main breaks. See, what's something else on there? Well, Kevin has a list, he generally, you know.
Okay, so you're asking, how many fire hydrants are inoffical?
Right. Well, he can tell me the status of it.
And you're asking how many water main breaks what, happened that week?
Well, I'd like to know how many water main breaks you had for the year.
Every week?
No, just for the year. He generally does it once a month, the report. Those are things that he has a report on. He generally hasn't. No, every month, once a month. You know, when he does his report, it's a month. You know, though, he has a list of stuff that he reports on.
Okay, I'll ask him about that. Economic Development Director Joseph Wizwati.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Applications for certificates of reoccupancy are required anytime residential property changes tenants or anytime the property changes ownership. This requirement has not changed and remains in effect, and we will enforce the code. ZOD's Pizza was approved for their business license. Will be opening soon. They'll be located in the old Villa de Pizza location on Sauk Trail. Roof and facade work has been underway on the old laundromat on Sauk Trail. Many people have taken notice of the improvements. We've got a few calls about permits, and yes, they have pulled the permit for that work, so. As the mayor mentioned in his report, the gas and wash was issued a permit for mass excavation and foundation work, which has begun at the location. Groundbreaking ceremony will be scheduled this Friday at the location. Invitations have been sent out. Anyone going, I'd suggest wearing comfortable shoes that are going to get dirty. Don't wear heels. They will be removing a lot of the overgrowth and concrete pad that is currently located on the state property at the northwest corner of 394 and Sauk Trail pending permit from the state. The state will be tearing down the old laundromat, or excuse me, the old used car lot on the southwest corner of Sauk Trail and 394 in the next several weeks. That process will begin. As the mayor also stated, the consultant, TESCA, will be here for our comprehensive plan community meeting at 7:00 PM. All residents are encouraged to attend and give their input. And I would just like to kind of add, you know, this is a community plan for the village, so it's not a Joe Wizwati plan, it's not a Derek Burgess plan, it's a Sauk Village plan. So I would ask all residents to attend that meeting and give their input. Also, we will be having a, putting together a request for proposals for the logistics center engineer study that the village received the Invest in Cook grant for. That'll be coming out soon, and that'll be before the board during a committee of the whole meeting. One final thing that I added is that the contractor that's been doing the lawn cutting will be doing a final cut for all the properties, including those that were not identified by the code enforcement department in April, that were not added on the list. These will be included in that. So any properties that got missed will get done one final time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, the new business opened up the Sugar Shack. It opened up last week, and I understand the first day it opened, it sold out. But I was there the other day, and they didn't have any, what they sold out was the funnel case and I think some of the hoagies, so they do make hoagies made to order. I didn't get a chance to get in the funnel case, and they didn't have any, which I really don't need any, but I was trying to sneak and get one. But anyway, they're open there, they're very friendly, and they have an outside, I guess you'd call it garden, that you should utilize before it gets cold out, that you can sit there and eat. It's enclosed, well, it's outside, but it's enclosed in the fence.
And the food's good?
The food is great. So who said the food is good? The food is great. I don't know if you guys remember, but the guy that's doing the hoagie sandwiches used to be here years ago, located where the Advance Auto Complex is located. He had one of those restaurants there, and he made some good hoagies there, and I had one of them, it was still good. Okay, reports from trustees, standing committees, and comments. Public Service Committee Trustee Bernice Brewer.
No report, Mr. Mayor. However, I still want to state again that my administrative code for to get copies is still not working, and I need to get the code.
When did that happen? Because I need to know. When did that happen? Did it happen today?
It's been more than a month ago.
No, it happened, when you said that time it happened, trustee Todd came in and there was a glitch, we had to call proven. We took care of it. That's why I'm saying, when did that happen?
Well, I was in there, it is Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, tomorrow?
Wednesday.
Last Wednesday?
That's Wednesday, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know about that. If I had to know, well, if it's not working, then I'll make sure, because when you said it that day, trustee Todd came in and said the same thing, and there was something with the computer, I guess, with our computer system, and then they had to reset it, but, and trustee Todd can say that we got it back to working. So I don't know, could you check it before I bring somebody back out? So could you check it within the next few days so you can find out if your code is working? Is that it?
No, I'm sorry, we'll do, yes.
Okay. Budget and Finance Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Wednesday, we will have a committee meeting here at 7:00. I believe Gerald will be in attendance, in which we'll go over the cybersecurity policy that I might present to the board pretty soon. My next comment is Madam Clerk, excuse me, cybersecurity. Madam Clerk, for next week's agenda, can you add on there the discussion for the civic upgrade that we talked about about three weeks ago? We need to have another discussion as trustees didn't have the appropriate materials at the appropriate time. And also, Mr. Mayor, I believe about a month ago, you asked the department heads for some of their needs, a list of their needs. Have you got, what's the status on that? Will they be giving that to you soon?
You're talking about their wish lists and things that they need to have done?
Correct.
Yes. They're still compiling it. Kevin's not here today. I didn't see him today, but that's something that, yeah, I did ask him about, and I'm waiting on that to come. And when I do get that, I'll bring that, we have a meeting to bring to the board, and we'll see what, you know, because that's one of the things that has to be, the budget has to be amended to do that, to insert that, so yes. Because these are items that are not in the budget. So I get that as soon as he gives me the list.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question.
From Mr. Grant?
Yes, trustee Grant, I have a question. The difference between the 1.3 million and the 808,000, I think it is, it's like 400,000 or something like that, do we have any kind of documents to show what the monies were dispersed on, used for? You know, the 400,000 that's in between? Do we know what happened, you know, what's going on with that money?
So.
How was it dispersed?
So it wasn't dispersed at all. So the 808,000 was for the cash reserve, the balance, let's just say 500,000. That's, is going to be used as what the department has to put together a list of things that they need. So out of that 500,000.
No, that's what they go to use.
That's, that's not all of it, but, you know, it'd be taken consideration depending on how much they need.
So we'll still have 808,000 in reserve?
Correct.
Okay.
Housing and Government Relations Trustee Tate. Ordinance Review Committee Trustee Linda Tha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ordinance Review Committee will meet on September 24th at 6:30 PM here. We'll be in the conference room B because the room is being used. And we're going to go over several of the ordinances that I'm getting back from the attorneys, and then once we approve that, then I'm going to bring it before the board to have them voted on. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Trustee Beth Zupan.
Thank you, Mayor. We did meet last week, as several of the audience members indicated, they joined us as guests, and we discussed with the chief the fact that he is continuing to work on a presentation for us on community policing. He hopes to have that to me by the end of this week. Once he gets that to me, we will be establishing a date and time for a community forum on that topic. Following that, we will then have another training session for the community on active shooter training. Separate to that, we also did broach the subject of Halloween, since it's never too early to talk about my second favorite holiday of the year, which is trick-or-treating and Halloween. And Mayor, I'll broach the subject with you separately just to talk about Halloween and trick-or-treating hours before I put it out there publicly, but we did have a conversation about what to do for that. So before I put that out there, I'll just confirm that you're okay with those hours. And the last thing that we did discuss at our meeting was, instead of our usual meeting next month on October 3rd, which is the first Wednesday of the month, we're going to have a field trip next month, and we're actually going to attend Night Court as a committee. So if anybody cares to join us at Night Court, it's the first Wednesday of the month over in the big conference room at the Police Department. At 7:00, I believe it starts. So we were going to actually do that as a committee next month instead of having our usual meeting. So feel free to join us at that event instead. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Community Outreach Trustee Robert Potter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been researching, thank you, let me answer. I've been researching, calling equipment companies and looking for some type of equipment that we could put into the community center that would be safe, that would be supervised. And as of yet, we have not received any return back from any companies yet, reference used equipment and things like that. School has started back, and so our delivery with them is going to be a little bit slow because I think they're going to be affected with school. But we would like to have a couple of dances before the Thanksgiving holiday if we can. And that's my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commission senior advisory council, Chairman Emmett Farmer.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Okay, our next meeting for the senior advisory council is September 13th, which is Thursday, and all are welcome. They just passed out the new calendar for September, and they're posted on the doors of the Senior Center. We have finalized our second trip for the seniors to the Four Wheels Casino on Friday, September 28th, and that'll be from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. The cost again is $35 with a $25 credit for the food and game, and your money is due by September 18th. And we'd like to, for you all, to please encourage all the seniors to come out and join us on our second trip. Also, the health care for the seniors has been rescheduled from September 27th to October 11th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, we have COM Ed, and they'll be out at the Senior Center on Tuesday, September 18th at 10:00 AM. We're holding an informational seminar for all households. Free home assessments can be scheduled. The COM Ed will provide information on how to save on your electric bill. We do have some flyers, I've got some in the back of the room, so if you all need some flyers, please encourage everyone to come out. Also, the seniors are walking every morning, Monday through Friday, in the park behind the Village Hall, and we would like you all to come out and join us. We start at 7:00 AM, and we walk for one hour. And lion dancing with Miss Tina, who also does the lion dancing at the community center. She has joined us over at the Senior Center too every Tuesday for the one in September, and except for September 18th when we're having the COM Ed come out. But every other Tuesdays and that is from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and she's only charged $3 for the seniors. So if you're going over to the community center and paying $7, you can get a discount by coming to the Senior Center and joining us for lion dancing. Also, you've got game night every first and third Friday. Please come out, invite the seniors for dance with some other gangs. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the counts payable on disbursements for September 11, 2018 in the amount of $357,585.14. It was moved by trustee Grant and seconded by trustee Zupan. Any question?
I'd like to make a motion to remove.
You can't make a motion. The motion on the floor. The motion on the floor, you can't make a motion while motion is on the floor.
Okay, well, I have a comment there.
Okay.
The, at what point, I'm sorry, I have to remind those, I'm supposed to remove something?
You can't, okay, the reason I'm saying is you can't make a motion, cause the motion's on the floor to accept. If you want something removed, you can ask for the motion to be rescinded if that's what you wanna do, but you can't make a motion on a motion.
A motion to rescind something.
You can ask to have something rescinded.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the accounts payable, portions of the accounts
Excuse me, I'm not understanding what you're saying. What's item number?
You want to make a motion, I have to rescind the motion, right?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to accept accounts payable.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you have a comment about something, you can make that comment.
I want to. Well, what I wanna do is approve the accounts payable, but I want a portion of the accounts payable removed. So how would I phrase that motion?
You want to amend?
Yes, okay. I would like to, a motion, I'd like to present a motion to amend the accounts payable for, what's the date, 9/11/2018. Yeah.
How many motions? You can't do that because there's been a motion on the floor already. You have to ask us to amend our motion.
I just get that. So you wanna know what it's for?
No, I'm not, first of all, you, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. In order to amend the motion, you have to ask the people that made the motion to rescind their motion. And then you can make a motion to change whatever it is you wanna change. You have to ask the two people that asked to make the motion to rescind their motion that they made. They made a motion to accept the, no, she has, they have to, they have to rescind, but their motion is that she wants to like to make a motion. So, I mean, well, that's, that's, that's true too. You have to let us know what it is you're, what you're trying to amend.
Well, what directions I'm getting it from?
I'm asking you, what is it, I'm asking you, what is it that you want to amend?
I wanna amend the, a motion, a motion for new business dated 9/11 and to take some things off of.
Trustee Brewer, what do you wanna take off?
Accounts, some things off the accounts payable. Things I wanna take off is I want to delete the salaries for Dr. Strader in the amount of $2,966,050 for human resources and also for $1,700 for union negotiations. This stuff has been going on for quite a long time and we have asked and asked for clarification on how many hours she should be paid for, for this pay period along with she has earned And nobody is really telling us what she's being paid for. Every pay period is a discussion on whether or not she should be paid for 17 hours, 17.45 or something. Something needs to be done about that and we need to address that right away. So this is an ongoing thing and I would like to be, like it to be addressed on taking this issue off.
So I'll ask the one that made the motion, are you willing to rescind your motion and have her make a new motion? Or are you willing to have your motion stay on the board, I mean, on the record and pass that?
I'll keep my motion on the record.
Pardon me?
Keep my motion on the record. I would like to keep the motion as is.
Personally, second, did you want to?
I'm gonna say that A, the 148325 is going along the statement of work of $6,000 a month. The 850 per invoice is for the negotiations, which is separate to that. So no, I am not willing to rescind my second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for the accounts payable and the second. Madam Clerk, would you please call?
One minute, I don't know if I should do this now or later. So let me ask you this. I have another motion to amend the accounts payable for 9/11 to include any payments for Miss Suffin, because we don't know what her salary is, we don't know what her position description is. It has not been approved and yet we're paying her. And I don't think we should pay her unless she's officially one of the people that we're supposed to be approving for payments. So I'd like to have her salary moved and that to be revisited and approved accordingly and in accordance with what is supposed to.
I don't know what that means, but Miss Suffin is an employee. She was put in as interim because the position is vacant. So she was put in by myself as an interim until the board, and then bringing it back to the board to be voted on as full director. But to not pay at this particular point and they were put in that position, I really don't understand what that means, that you don't wanna pay somebody for doing what they were asked to do. So in that, in that respect, she was, as it's stated, she's an interim finance director. So she was put in that position because that position was vacant, it didn't exist.
Well, we're doing what we're supposed to do and watching the money and as I was told we're supposed to. Are you finished?
Who?
Dr., Mr. Carter, he was talking while I was saying.
Well, my comment was that if all of these are made decent or separate, better on, if they work hours, you have to pay them. If there's a problem with it, it's actual fact, we have to affect it. You have to discuss that. Yeah, take the money with you.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but also we have some Sock Village codes that we have to follow. And she's supposed to be approved by trustees whenever she does a job for us. So since she, for some reason, she's not approved, then she shouldn't be paid. And along with Dr. Strader, there's an issue every pay period with her salary. So those things I would love to have a motion to move.
I understand you and this seems like it's personal, but.
There isn't anything personal, we're talking finance, so don't even put that out there. There is finance and that's my job to watch after the money.
So you're asking for another motion?
I wanna put it on record. I know everybody's gonna approve it, but you just gotta put it, somebody gotta watch the money.
Okay.
You know?
Anything, any other questions in regard to the accounts payable? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer.
Did you say by motion, I failed? Did you say? I'm telling you, shouldn't that be said?
Pardon me?
Shouldn't that be said? Okay, pardon me, I'm sorry.
No, I'm excited, with the trustee Brewer, oh, thank you. Okay.
Trustee Brewer.
Oh, yes. Well, not as attorney.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
I had a question, I didn't hear what trustee Brewer's vote was. Did you say?
She said yes.
My vote is yes.
I said yes with exceptions.
Motion carried.
No, it's not with exceptions.
Hey, you can't vote.
It's yes or no.
I said yes with exceptions, that's what I said.
Okay.
Item number two. Item B, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village of Sock Village to designate Old Plain Bank, First Midwest Bank, US Bank, Two Funds, and Amalgamated Bank as depositories for the village of Sock Village.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Tate. Any questions?
I have a question. The interim said that nothing has changed, that these are our banks. So you have a resolution before us and I see that you have her down as the finance director, which we have not approved her as our finance director, she's the interim. So why is this being brought before us until she's actually appointed?
Okay, she, she is the interim finance director. We have to have her name on their bank in order for us to do business, in order for her to do business with the banks. So as interim, that would be one of the things she has to do, as I stated before, until the board votes to make her, we have to have someone on that account and it should be the finance director.
I think this is.
But it should, oh, you're saying that it should say interim on here?
Correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, I will get and make sure that that is put on there and you'll get a copy. Any further questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to adjournment. Moved by trustee Tate, seconded by trustee Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.